All right. Thank you. Look at that. On the spot. Thank you so much, Ron. All right. So first order of action tonight is approval of the agenda. But before we do that, we had some greeters at the door that we would love to have come on up and introduce themselves. You want to introduce yourselves? He'll get you a microphone and then, you know, he could tell us what school you're from. And maybe since we're at the end of the school year, be there a memory from the past school year or what you're looking forward to this summer break?
My name's Ally Roush. I'm from Sumner High School. And I think this year I definitely was able to build a lot of community. I got a lot more involved in the school and as an IB cohort member, I formed a lot of relations with other IB cohort. And I think we all have a really good like relationship with each other and I'm excited to go into next year with them.
Hi, my name is Erica Kramer. One thing that was really exciting about this past school year was that I joined full IB. And then I feel like our cohort put in a lot of effort to like grow closer to each other. We did, uh, no cohort has done this, but we brought food every Monday, which is kind of fun. Like we didn't miss a single Monday. Someone always brought food. We called them munch Mondays. So that was really fun. That's probably my favorite memory from the school year.
Cool.
I'm Adeline Carr. I'm also part of their full IB group. This year I really worked on getting more involved and I feel like I really like grew as a person because of that. And I like really like learned how to put myself out there more. And yeah, I think that was probably my favorite part.
Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate you being here.
Yeah.
Have a good summer. All right. Our first action item is the approval of the agenda. Administration recommends the board of directors approve the June 18th, 2025 board meeting agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
A second.
Any discussion? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Approval passes. All right. Next item is administration recommends that the board of directors approve the consent agenda items for June 18th, 2025 board meeting that are in your pocket. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Thank you, Tom. Uh, any discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? All right. Motion passes. Probably get some recognition. Some good stuff to do.
Oh, yeah, we have a lot of great stuff to do tonight. Before we introduce some of our new administrators, we want to honor two people that are leaving us. Oh, Beth, she's already like, oh geez. Yeah. Well, I knew you wouldn't be here if I said that we were going to do this. But Kelly, you want, do you want to go first? All right. We have Beth Dykman and Karen Finnegan. Yes. Beth, do you have any grandchildren here in the room?
I do.
Okay. That is shocking to me. Yeah, I was gonna say.
Good evening, um, Board and Dr. Dent. I just want to take a moment to honor a remarkable leader and dear friend of mine, Beth. So I've had the privilege of working closely with Beth over the last, I don't even know how many years. And so I just think about all the great memorable times we have together, whether it's the good times. Sometimes it might have been a more challenging time, depending what was going on in education. But all along the way, Beth has just been a solid steadfast leader, always making decisions that put students first. And so she has truly been a champion in this district, whether it's from, um, you know, early learning to elementary education. And she just leads always with her heart, always with clarity and always with strength and passion. So anyone who knows Beth, um, she's just a people purse, people first person. She just always cares. It's always out there on her sleeve. And it's one thing about her leadership that I will take away into my own practices because she just, she cares about people always. Always. It doesn't matter what's going on, um, always and forever. So, um, I will miss our 5:30 AM morning chats as well as the rest of the day in the evening. We kind of joke about it and, um, kind of funny, but we kind of joke and say that her husband will probably miss them as well. So, um, so nevertheless, um, or should I say nonetheless? So this is one of the Bethisms that we have. Best leadership will just continue on and Beth always reminds us to breathe. Am I doing it right? Everybody help me? Breathe, breathe so that we can lead through strength and taking that pause that we needed chaos. So, um, one of the other things too, that I really admire about Beth is how much she cares and cherishes her family. And I think that's the most, the most, I guess, the most heartfelt thing that I think about her in retirement of just spending time with her precious family, her just beloved grandchildren. But we, uh, Beth will still be around. So if you don't know, many of Beth's family members work in the district. Her grandchildren go to school here. So I'm sure that we will see her smiling faces in many of our buildings. And so, um, I just want to say thank you, Beth, for everything that you've done, being my partner, um, all the time. And that I know that her legacy will live on for many years to come. So we have a plaque for you and flowers. So can I? Does I read the plaque? Okay. So Beth's plaque says, "School Board Recognition Presented to Beth Dykman and Grateful Appreciation for Your Years of Service. Your vision, leadership and dedication have guided us through challenges and triumphs alike, enriching the lives of countless students and families with deep respect and profound gratitude. We acknowledge your remarkable contributions to the Sumner Bonnie Lake School District and its community."
Thank you. And no, Beth, we're not going to make you say anything because we'll all start crying. Yeah, I think this one's gonna be funny.
Can I say one thing really fast? So I didn't like prepare anything, Beth, but I have to say you first started out as Mrs. Dykman, right? Because you were my kids' principal like 15 years ago. As I first moved to Bonnie Lake, 19, 20 years ago, my kids started at Victor Falls and you nurtured them there and my family. And one day stopped me in the hall and said, "Hey, do you ever think about being on the school board?" Well, here we are. Well, I don't know about that. But, um, so the, you changed from Mrs. Dykman to Beth as, um, I got to know you better. And I just love the love that you have for your family. And like Kelly said so eloquently, um, we just wish you well and hope you just soak up all of those moments loving on your grandbabies. So thank you for everything you did for me personally and for the district. You've been a gem.
Hey Karen, if you join me up here. My friend. So Karen has been our executive director of special services for a long time. She taught in this district, went away for a short time and then came back and came back home. So for those of you that don't know, um, Karen taught, um, students who needed some extra support with behavior for most of her time in the classroom and did, did a lot of what they call functional behavior assessments or analysis, right? So you try to figure out what's the cause of the behavior, what's the antecedent, what's the target behavior and how do you get there? So can we couldn't much go out to retirement without doing a functional behavior analysis of what we see going on? So you can read the full functional behavior analysis later. But I'll give you the highlights here. The data is clear. Karen has started smiling every, every time someone says retirement, showing signs of increased anticipation of grand parenthood and increased pace as she finishes the work in Sumner Bonnie Lake School District. Her new behaviors are things like sipping coffee slowly, planning spontaneous getaways and saying, "When I retire", with alarming confidence. I think we've identified the function of this behavior. It's a well-earned escape from compliance and audits and access to joy, rest and time with people that you love. Karen, your legacy in this district is unmatched. Your wisdom, knowledge and leadership have made a lasting impact on me and on us. We are better because you have been here. We're happy for you and just a little jealous. We hope that you enjoy every minute of your next chapter. You've more than earned it, my friend. All right. So Karen, in grateful appreciation for your years of service, vision, leadership, dedication, guided us through challenges and triumphs alike, enriching the lives of countless students and families with deep respect, profound gratitude. We acknowledge your remarkable contributions to this district and its community.
Oh, I could tell a really funny story about Karen Finnegan, but I won't. Well, it's really good. But I won't. I love these two that, uh, I truly respect and honor and love them and will miss them. This place won't be the same without either one of you. And it's very true. The impact that you are leaving this place is incredible and we love you for it. So thanks. So now we have a whole new crop to bring in. Ellie McDaniel is almost our new executive director of elementary education and she, um, she's going to introduce some of our new elementary administrators.
Yeah, come on up. And Kelly, I don't know about the 5:30 AM chat. We might have to go 6:30. Yes. Well, okay, ladies, come on up. Good evening, Dr. Dent and members of the school board. I'm back because we do have another new crop of wonderful administrators joining our awesome elementary team. So first off, Angela Kelly, I gotta put my glasses on. So excited for Angela. Angela's been around for a long time. She is going to continue her leadership role at Victor Falls as principal, following a very successful year as assistant principal. Adam's back there beaming with pride. Angela has built strong, positive relationships with students, families and staff, and led efforts to foster such a wonderful culture up there that has had a meaningful impact on teaching and learning. Prior to Victor Falls, Angela served at Toholy Heights Elementary since its opening in 2018, holding roles including assistant principal, student success dean and counselor. She holds a bachelor's, listen to this, this is so interesting. I didn't know this about you. She holds a bachelor's in aerospace studies from Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University. Yeah. And both a master's degree in guidance and counseling and a principal cert from City University. A longtime Falcon parent, Angela's connection to Victor Falls is both personal and deep. Her commitment to our district's promise is evident in every step of her work. So please join me in congratulating Angela as new. And new to the Sumner Bonnie Lake School District, we have Bethany Whistler, who's going to be joining Angela as the assistant principal at Victor Falls. Bethany comes to us from the Enham Clough School District with a strong background in education, having served as a dean of students, summer school principal, early intervention specialist, title one lap reading specialist and classroom teacher since 2007. What grades did you teach?
Kindergarten, lots of firsts and support.
Wonderful. She brings a well-rounded perspective and a passion for fostering a safe, inclusive and thriving school culture. With strengths in instructional leadership, social emotional learning and behavior support, Bethany is committed to empowering both our students and our staff. She holds a bachelor in elementary education from City U in Seattle and a master's in educational leadership from Western Governors University. And outside of school, Bethany enjoys time outdoors with her two teenage daughters, her German Shepherd and a growing collection of animals. We'll have to talk more later. Her lifelong passion for education continues to shine through her work and we are super excited to have you join our district. Congratulations. And finally, longtime Sumner School District employee Cheryl Eldridge. I'm super excited to have her part of our elementary team. Look at that. Oh, Cheryl. She will be joining Jill Dornan as assistant principal at Crestwood. Currently she serves as dean of students at Liberty Ridge Elementary, where she has helped lead school-wide behavior expectations, addressed chronic absenteeism and supported our students through data-informed practices. She also contributes to several district committees focused on assessment, instruction and student support. With 25 years in the Sumner Bonnie Lake School District, Cheryl brings a strong connection to our amazing community and a wealth of experience as roles of a learning specialist, an intervention, reading specialist, an intervention coordinator and an instructional coach. She holds a bachelor's in psychology from, yes, University of Washington. Go Huskies! A master's in K8 teaching from City University, a special education endorsement from PLU and is finishing her admin degree from City U. I think you're done. And she is also a national board certified teacher. She looks forward to building a supportive, inclusive school culture where students and staff thrive. Welcome as Crestwood Orca, Cheryl Eldridge.
Yes, I've been here a very long time and I'm honored about that. I've enjoyed serving the Sumner Bonnie Lake School District for 25 years and thank you so much for this opportunity to come in a different role. Oh, thank you so much for the warm welcome. I am thrilled to get to join such a strong district, to get to contribute to the amazing work that's already happening and support our staff and students. So thank you so much for welcoming me.
Thank you very much for this honor. I, um, one thing that I love about the school district is getting to walk around a room and see people who impacted my students' life. And I want to be able to give back the same way to the community. And I, there's not a better place to raise your children and to have your kids at school. So I am just so honored to be a part of that and continue supporting our Falcon families, just as they did with me and my family. So thank you.
Okay, let's keep the fun moving with Steve Sholand, executive director of secondary. Although I want to know if secondary people brought little faces because I love my elementary peeps.
Yeah, no, no faces that I'm aware of. I've got a couple of people joining me here, but as they make their way up here. Much like Ellie talked about, uh, and, uh, like we do when we have an opportunity to go out, go out and hire a teacher. For administrative roles at our secondary schools, uh, we really go through a rigorous, thorough process and I'm just excited. I was able to be a part of both the higher at Mountain View Middle School and Bonnie Lake High School. But I'm going to hand things off to our two principals that are here tonight and allow them to make the introductions to two familiar folks to many of you. So in some cases it's just a reintroduction. Uh, for others, just know, uh, they're familiar faces and we're so happy to have them back.
Well, I am excited to introduce a guy who really doesn't need an introduction in the Sumner Bonnie Lake School District, Brett McDaniel, returning to us after one year at Character Strong. I was thrilled to hear that he would be interested in coming to Mountain View. His experience at, um, Donald Isman with our Toholy community. And then of course, um, at Sumner Middle as an assistant principal. He understands the unique needs of middle schoolers and we're, it's a sporty place in a middle school. So having somebody that knows, um, just exactly how to jump in and support is going to help our school tremendously. And we are excited for the skills that he brings with MTSS, of course, Character Strong and his background in that athletics, ASB. Most importantly though, I am very excited for the student-centered energy that he brings to a school. He had an opportunity to come to our new Wolf Night last month and just the energy that he brought, just being there, uh, at our table, meeting families, um, seeing families that he knew from before. It was just, uh, it was uplifting, quite honestly, and, uh, it was just great to be around. So I'm excited for what he's going to bring to our school. Um, so with that, Brett McDaniel.
Thank you. Uh, first, Amy, thank you. And, uh, just a shout out to Karen and Beth because we've interacted for so many years. So it's sad to see you leaving, but I'm excited for you too. Um, so thank you in, in that journey. And then thanks for bringing me back, uh, and allowing me a midlife gap year. The kids call it a gap year, you know, where you just leave, but parents pay for you. I took, took the opportunity to just kind of step away and try some things with a dear friend. And it was a great privilege to work for John and in Character Strong. And, and so just thank you for bringing me back and giving me the opportunity to serve, um, the best district in the world. So that's it. Thank you. Look forward to working with you again.
So I'm sensing a theme. It's kind of like homecoming, right? There's all these people, uh, people who I, and, and in a good way, I mean, especially a lot of people in this room that I've noticed who we know, who have been here before, people we highly admire. And it says a lot about our district that people come back to it. In this case, I have the privilege and I'm proud to introduce Charlie Hyland as the next assistant principal of Bonnie Lake High School. Charlie has been, comes to us from SHS, not that SHS, from Stilcom High School, from a different SHS. But he was, he started as an assistant principal there as well as, um, this director of CTE for that district. So, um, a lot of huge growth and learning. Now, prior to that, he was at Bonnie Lake High School as one of our leadership teachers and the, and, um, our department chair, worked with CTE and our broadcasting program and built, um, helped to kind of rebrand our school at a time. So he's a big part of our school. Um, he's a big part of adding on to what build the hill means and a big part of power. And, um, he's going to fit in exactly with what our school needs. He has a heart for student. He has servant leadership ingrained into who he is from a very young age. And he serves our community. He lives in our community. He cares deeply about our community. Little known fact about, about Charlie, um, well, maybe it is well-known. I don't know if it's a little known, but he was butch and wazoo. So it's a big deal. Just look at his license plate. He's very proud of that. But also, um, you know, also, um, um, but I encourage, I, I used to be his supervising administrator and I encouraged him to join the path to becoming an assistant principal in the first place. So to me, this is a very proud moment. Um, and I'm proud of him and the growth he's had. And I can't wait to see what he does for our community. Now, his wife told me to work the word sparkle into my communication, but I don't, I don't know if I could think of a really creative way to do it other than just call out his wife for making me do that. So I hope our bed still works. Um, but, um, I can't wait to see him sparkle in our community. There you go. Okay. All right, Charlie Hyland.
Well, uh, Board, thank you. Um, Tony, I just want to say thank you for what, five years ago saying, hey, you're going to do this. And I said, mm, and then the next year I was like, all right, let's do it. I'll do the admin. And, um, ever since I joined like that route, I've found my passion and truly my calling of, of helping lead schools. And, um, I'm really excited to bring the knowledge I've gained the last couple of years when I've been gone to Bonnie Lake. And, uh, it's a homecoming. It's definitely a homecoming for us. So I'm excited to come back and be part of this awesome district. And my family is, you can see they're here and they're ready to be Panthers again. So, uh, we're excited. So thank you.
So some awesome stuff for sure. Yeah, really, really, uh.
There's a lot. I thought we were done. Sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh.
I was stalling there for a second.
That's right. Adam's like, uh, we have two new directors for human resources. Okay, I'm gonna say that again. We have two new directors.
I know we almost had to do an investigation of why that was overlooked.
I know.
But we're good. Um, I am grateful to be back to podium and I'm introducing two great teammates. I'm super excited to have this, uh, team, uh, join our, our human resources department. So I'm going to start with Adam Euler. Um, and it's an honor to introduce him as one of our new, uh, two new directors of human resource. He brings over 20 years of experience. Compassion and equity, most recently at Victor Falls, where he champions student-centered practices, strengthened teacher leadership and led development and implementation of our district's shared decision-making model. He's, before that, he was in White River, um, as a director overseeing MTSS and early learning. And is also respected presenter and instructor. Adam's deep, deep commitment to building systems of support where every learner is known and valued and his inimitable style makes him perfect for this role. Adam, we're excited to have you join the team.
I promised to teach David how to tie a bow tie. There are remedial lessons for this. But no, thank you for, um, this new challenge and new opportunity. Serving this community is, um, a gift and I can't wait to, to walk into my new role and with a new teammate and, um, hopefully support all of you, um, very well. So thank you. And Scott.
Wow, I didn't know. I don't even know what just happened there. All right. Inside joke there. So Shelley, um, it's a pleasure to introduce Shelley Stickel as the other new director in human resources. She has been a cornerstone of our district and of HR since 2000. She started as a certificated HR specialist, then left for a short time to serve as a registrar at Sumner High School before coming back home to HR where she rose through the ranks, um, as a supervisor. And since 2015 as a, or so, as an HR operations manager, known affectionately among her team as the oracle of HR. She has unmatched recall of every past practice and policy and helps keep the entire department grounded and out of HR jail. Her colleagues describe her as thorough, thoughtful and fair. And she brings not only a deep institutional knowledge, but a clear vision for future successes. Under her leadership, HR processes have been refined and strengthened, culminating this year with a perfect audit with zero findings. We love that. She has, she's deeply committed to this district and to helping every individual thrive. I've had the privilege of watching you grow these last four years into a strategic, forward-thinking leader who has really learned to put yes first, consider yes if and yes and as we continue to put the human in human resources. We're lucky to have her in this new role. Please join me in welcoming Shelley Stickel.
Okay. I didn't know that's what they said about me. So there you go. Um, I appreciate the confidence of, you know, Lori, Board and David for putting me in this position. Um, I'm hoping, you know, with my foundation, my 25 years and, and operations and stuff will be a good pairing with Adam. We're here with all this experience in the buildings that we can come up with some great ideas to make things better and support everybody else out there. So thank you very much.
Okay. Now I think, I think anybody else out there knew? I'm just, I'm just checking. Now I think we're really done. Pretty sure. I'm confident. Yes.
Yeah. Why don't we just take a, why don't we take a quick seven-minute break? We'll come back at 6:35 and, uh, that way we can walk out and congratulate everybody on their retirement and their new roles. All right. Okay. We will get started again. We lost a bit of the crowd, but that's okay. All right, so we're done with Superintendent comments. That was, that was really cool, to see the retirements and the people filling big shoes, and just, and the right people in the right places, just really excited. Exciting. We move us to Board Member comments. Does anybody want to volunteer to go first, or do you want me just to pick? Tom?
All right, jump right in there.
Go for it.
First of all, I want to thank all of you supporting me getting through what we've been through. Hectic month last month. I was warned about it might be busy. I had no idea. I met so many amazing students, so many wonderful staff throughout, and so many, all of you helped me get through the process. It was just, I loved it so much. This past month, I did a number of things, including going to Rotary, Sumner, Bonnie High School, and Sumner High School, of the awards last Ignite that, seeing all those amazing students, and where they've gone, what they've done. And I also went to Bonnie Lake High School Scholarship Night, and some of the students I've seen before. It's really crazy how hard they're working to get where they are, and where they're going to go in the future. We also, and going to Victor Falls, I was just blown away by the amount of artwork in that school, the colorful things we saw there, the music there, all the rooms full of different, every place I walked around, there was something else happening at school. And, and as I had mentioned, Dr. Dent, I've never been that school before. I went to Beautiful Bonnie Lake, and I helped clean out front there. But this time I walked down the road to see what the school was all about. So I was very impressed by that school. I can't wait to sit this next year and see what they're doing this next year. And then we had, the retirement was, so many people leaving us, and so many strong people. And we got some strong new ones coming to the district here, looking forward to work with them and stuff. But sad to see them go on, but those things happen, you know. And we also have the Panther Award Night, and Dr. Dent was there with me too, with the squadron. Pardon? I know, every time I look around, you're there. The Panther Squadron Awards, J R O T C. Those people have so much energy. Every time somebody got something, the whole place blew up with excitement behind us. You'd think it was just, it was great seeing what the hell they're digging in doing that, and how involved they are. And I believe this is the first year, right? So I can't wait to have this next year go on in the future. And then Eli Hill School Program was over, that was just seeing those students, and how far they've come. And I toured that school before, earlier this year, and to see how they're graduating, and where they're going to. That was just remarkable program we have for them. Helped them go on different stages, so they felt comfortable coming up there and getting their awards. And goodness sake, and then the Victory Tour. I was upstairs here, and I seen all those kids coming through, and just so excited, so. And of course, graduation. It was huge, seeing all our students graduating, going on to other avenues in their life and stuff, being a part of that, and shaking so many hands. It was, it was great. So, again, it's been a wonderful six or eight months I've been here, and I look forward, the next year comes forward too. So thank you, everyone, and I look forward to more things happening.
JB, you want to go next?
All right. So I want, many of those things that Tom, I think, that just mentioned, we've all been to, so I won't repeat all of them. But I will say that one of the, one of the things that I had the privilege of doing this particular, this particular year, is to see a graduation at kindergarten level, to see a kind of graduation certificate presentation at the middle school level, and then to be part of the, which I have to say was pure magic. I still don't know how Stacy Scholes did it, because an entire eighth grade class, the entire school of eighth graders came in. It was, it was chaos, controlled chaos. They all sat down, and then they all came up to stay, on stage to pomp and circumstance, and Stacy Scholes reading off their full names in order. Not a single person missed, not a single person needed to be scrambled around. So, magic is still, I think, American Got Talent is calling her name, how she did it. And then high school graduation. And I have the privilege of this having been my second. So I think last year I was terrified, and didn't know what to expect. And so this year, I really felt like I could just enjoy how, how amazing our community is. The support that gets these kids over the finish line there is something to really be proud of. There wasn't a moment that I sat on stage where I just wasn't proud of our district, of our community, of the parents and the support. I mean, we filled, two high schools came in and, and filled an arena with just cheers and, and support for these students. And some of the talent that we saw, and the, and the give back. We had a standing ovation for one of our retiring employees, Mr. Dudley. And they were chanting his name and, and applauding him. So, yeah, they're giving back. It's their moment, their time, and yet they still have, you know, see the value of all that's been contributed to them. So that was amazing. The last thing that I would say is, I think the Eli Hill was just, is always one of my favorites. Now that I have, can say I have one of my favorites, because I've done it twice. And we had a, you know, a parent too that came up to us, and let us know how important the program was to their family and their student, and that their student would not have, have made it had it not been for that program. So, kudos to each and every one of those, those, the teachers and the administrators there that really helped these students know them. They told stories, personal stories about them. They know them, they value them, they're living our promise. And so, that's one of, one of my favorites.
That's great. Bill, did you want to go next? I'm working my way back this way.
All the things we, we did, absolutely fantastic. And you're right, graduation, all the years that I was, had the pleasure of being there with the kids and stuff. It is, it is just so amazing to, to connect with the kids one last time and that. But, you know, thanking the families, the kids, everybody. This is, this is a magical season. It's tiring. We start, what about, May 1? And as I used to tell my wife, "I'll see you at the end of June." But every one of the events we go to is just so uplifting and fun, and to watch the kids that you see, see start at a different place and where they end up is just truly amazing. And then, I'm going to say it now, I'm going to miss all of you. I've seen you more than some of my family members recently. Dr. Dent's Cabinet that we see every night. Lori's, I've asked her to send out an article on separation anxiety issues, so we can get through that. But, you know, it is really fun to be at these events with you guys that care so much about the kids and really enjoy the events. And that doesn't happen in all districts. I talk to colleagues and friends that do similar things. And it's, this is a true team, and it's just so fun to be able to do these things with you guys. So thank you.
Thank you, Bill, that was nice. Aaron, did you have anything?
Well, yeah, I should just say I agree with you, and I agree with you, because you pretty much summarized everything that was on my heart and mind. But I'll just say a couple of things very quickly. I would agree with you, Bill. I think this Board loves participating and seeing things in action. And so I would just say, keep the invitations coming. We love what we do here, but we love even more being present. So any opportunity to be present, present and see the good work happening, keep those invitations coming, because it truly renews our spirit for serving and is inspiring. So, thank you for the invitations. I would also say too, you know, JB and Tommy both said something that resonated with me that I've been thinking a lot about. It's just the power of community. One thing that I feel like Summer Bonnie Lake does very well is, we've really been working hard on a strategic plan, and with that comes systems. But behind those plans and behind those systems are people. And people make it work. And I just am consistently impressed with the quality of people who lean in, dig in, and do the hard work that needs to be done. Not only district employees that, like Bill said, we've seen a lot of recently, late nights, but also our community, you know, with Rotary honoring our seniors. The amount of scholarships and awards that we've seen given from community businesses and organizations that we, we went to some awards. The way they've supported our students has been incredible and inspiring. So, I just think I've, I've taken a step back and, and really tried to appreciate the little moments. One of my favorite little, little moments, Lori actually, was at the retirement celebration, where you were able to name every retiree by their name and attach something special to them. And again, that doesn't just happen, that's intentional work. And it's honoring for the people who are, who have dedicated so much of their career to our kids, and it was beautiful. The other thing I real, that stuck out with me, I always loved the Eli Hill graduation. It's, it's just wonderful. But Officer Anderson spoke on behalf of one of our students. He wrote a letter, and his words were presented. And I thought, oh my gosh, what an incredible moment of community. And then watching, instead of the presenters, watching the families listen to the words being spoken about their graduate with such a different perspective, and so heartwarming and wonderful. And I thought, another way we honor kids in our district and our families is to have an interpreter there to say it in their native language, so that their families can hear the wonderful things that are being said about their graduate. So there were just, there are so many great systems in place, and there are things that are happening to, to make the grand graduations happen and make the awards happen. But behind those systems are people. And there are people who work in this district, who live in this community. And I just am grateful to be a part of this community and be able to witness the beautiful things that are happening. It's quite moving, and I took up too much time. But anyway, that's, that's all I have to say.
I think it was all very worth saying, everything that everybody said. I think that it's such a great time of year to see everything come together, and the celebrations. I mean, the fact that, that the Sumner High School graduation agenda was flowing along like it normally did, and then it was stopped, and Mr. Dudley was brought up to honor such a servant leader in himself, and have the entire showarena stand up on their feet and give him a warm send-off into his retirement was, was, gave me goosebumps. It was amazing. And, you know, the Eli Hill program is just one that I think is, is so tremendously important to our district. You know, as it happens, I was coming out of Costco yesterday, and you know, we get stopped sometimes at the grocery store, and I did. I got stopped in the, in the parking lot, and there was a parent that I had done boosters at the middle school with. And she had had one of her students go through Eli Hill. And she just, you know, she said, "What's going on?" And we, I said, "Oh, we just had graduation, we had Eli Hill, we had Sumner High School, we had Bonnie Lake." She said, "Oh, Eli Hill." She just gushed about the program and how her student would not have graduated, would not have had a wonderful freshman year off at college, would not be thriving the way they're doing if it wasn't for the Eli Hill program.
Um, would not be thriving the way they're doing if it wasn't for the Eli Hill program. So I just shout out to Eli Hill. Um, I can't, I can't thank them enough for the hard work they do. And, and of course the district for supporting it. So. Great comments tonight. All right. So now we have to do the business stuff. We get all the celebrations and now we can do the more boring business. But we'll try to go through it as quickly as we can. Um, our first matter of business uh, is going to be our Capital Projects Bond Update. Our Director of Catapult Projects Marina Tane and Development and Capital Projects Facilities Manager John Bowman will present the June Bond Project Update to the Board of Directors. Welcome.
Yeah, I did kind of skip over that, didn't I? Yeah. So just for the record, we have no audience comments tonight, right David?
Okay. Thank you very much. I was told that earlier and so I just kind of kept going with that, just trying to get right to the business.
It's all good.
Yeah, it must be the end of the school year, right?
Yeah, it was, it was very smooth, very smooth.
Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Dent and Board of Directors, thank you very much. I hope you enjoy the um, stress ball. We, we do like our Sumner builds. Okay. I'm going to attempt. Okay. Shocked Robin with a short update, but just some real vital things that we want to share with the board tonight. So I'm going to share something really quick and then let John talk through some fun stuff with you. So first of all, um, it goes without saying how important these projects are. And the success of these projects is our mission. It is something we think about day and night and work hard to ensure. And so as part of that, um, we have really thought about what is the best delivery method for these projects. And you know, we are in a different time than we've been at other times that we've built in this district. Uh, the market conditions are very different than they were with the 2016 bond, with the 07 bond. Uh, you know, the, the, the number and type of contractors that are out there, just the change in the knowledge and, and options that we have is different at this time as well. So we spent some time really considering this and doing some homework. And how, we firmly believe that going in alternative project delivery method is the right method. Especially when you look at projects like Bonnie Lake High School, you know, expanding on an occupied building right where the front office is, trying in right at the most public space where everybody enters the building. That's a big deal. Um, Sumner High School, especially when we get to phase three, you know, being able to demolish that building in it, in a way that preserves function for the spaces that can't be demolished. Um, we need to have a better way of doing that work. Part of that is bringing the contractor in and getting their input in the design process, in the planning of those phases. And, and that deep understanding of construction and construction methods so that it informs our design and the way our documents are constructed. So again, doing that, there's a few different things. One, we have to go to the Project Review Committee, which is part of the Capital Projects. I forget the acronym, what it stands for, CPAR. So that is something that we will be doing it with these projects. Is we'll bring them to Project Review Committee to seek permission to go forward with this method, General Contractor Construction Manager, which is short, we call GCCM. Some of the other things to note, it is still a competitive process. For selection of the general contractor, we go through a competitive process that is qualifications based. Price has a component of that. And then all of the packages below are competitively bid. So we still have a competitive price and a competitive process. But this method will bring that contractor in to the design process, give us some advantages as we're getting these buildings ready to construct. And then also we'll be able to establish our cost for the work at an earlier stage in the process, which is also an advantage for us. You know, again, the, the success of these projects is the highest priority. And we as a team feel that this is the best method for us to achieve that. So I just want to let everyone know because we'll be doing a few things different, but the essence of what we'll be doing is still the same. So now for some fun project update stuff related to Sumner High School, I'm going to let John Bowman step forward.
I did draw the uh, short straw, so I got to do the fun stuff tonight. So appreciate that. There's a story behind that too, uh, for another time. Uh, Sumner High School Phase Two, really the design is really starting to take some shape. So as you can see in the, in the slide here before you, the building on the right side, that's the existing Phase One building. That's the one where we've got our science classrooms. It's occupied right now, the commons kitchen, all those kind of fun things going on in the library. The building on the left, that is the architect's rendering of how that will look for Phase Two. So very complimentary. They, the buildings look just awesome together. I, I like this view, but there's more, there's more fun stuff coming. This is a view looking from uh, basically from Main Street. So again, Phase One building with the Spartan on the side of it, on the right side. The new building matches uh, facade, matches the height, um, the colors, everything is going to stay the same. We're not going to throw something completely different at the district or anything else like that. A really nice looking view from Main Street. Um, this, if you walk out the building right here, and after the building's built and you walk across the parking lot towards the building, this is the view you'll have. So you walk up to the building, um, in the, and so this is kind of looking from the northwest portion of the building. So this is just the Phase Two building alone. Uh, the purple that you see in the center, not to compliment Dr. Dent's outfit, but uh, that you see in the center, that's like the main entrance. Sorry, I couldn't resist. Couldn't resist. So that's like where the uh, staff will come into the building. That's the main entrance area. Um, the building, the, the shorter building you see on the left side, like just past that uh, dark colored car in the parking lot, that is going to be the animal sciences building. And then right by that little SUV you see underneath the trees, uh, where it's got like the different colored roof, that's going to be the future greenhouse. So to give you kind of a perspective of how this building is kind of taking shape so far. This is my favorite. This is, this one really describes quite a bit. Um, you can see um, right away, I will always, I kind of nerd out a little bit on the photoball take. Uh, the PV panels on the roof. So again, making some allowances for that. Uh, the little bus that you see in the parking lot right there is right next to where the tiny sparts, little outside play area is going to be. That's going to be their drop off point. Um, again, that purple section is uh, where staff will kind of come into the building. The parking lot being expanded a little bit more to the left side, you see the, the top aerial view, kind of an angled view of, of the animal sciences. And then just to the side of that, the greenhouse, uh, beautiful three-story building, very complimentary for what's happening on the site. These slides are going to be shared with the Bond Oversight Committee on the 30th for the next meeting. Want to make sure that the board had a chance to see these ahead of that. Thank you.
Any questions?
We don't have a question, so I have. Yeah, does, did anybody have any questions? It seems very straightforward and stick into the plan that's always been there. It looks exciting.
Not really a question, but I do want to say thank you for um, presenting this and, and for the forward thinking so that we can be a head, really proactive. Uh, especially with, with kind of uncertain times and whatnot. Um, it sounds like the plan that you've put together. So I really appreciate the time you've taken to look at it differently, um, knowing that we're in a different situation and, and a different time. And um, and, and then the transparency of sharing all of that with us and then with the Bond Oversight Committee. Um, I really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? There would be the proverbial put you on the spot question, which is do you have like a, maybe within a six month timeframe, you could say when you're going to break ground? No? Okay. All right. So we'll move on to the next thing. We'll uh, look forward to seeing shovels on the ground. Thank you.
Not in the next 12 months.
Okay. Well, we look forward to that ceremony.
There. Okay.
Awesome. Thank you very much. All right. This brings us to some action items for the evening. Uh, first one is Resolution Number Seventeen Slash Twenty Four Dash Twenty Five Out of Endorsement Assignment Whoever. The administration recommends the board adopt Resolution Number Seventeen Twenty Four Twenty Five Out of, Out of Endorsement Assignment Whether, wait for. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tom. Any discussion?
There we go. Um, I know how hard human resources, Dr. Dent, building principles, I mean, it's a, it's a cast of thousands who work so hard to make sure that we have everybody in endorsement. But when you're trying to put a staff together, there's every once in a while, um, something, something can't line up, but I really appreciate it.
Yeah, definitely a lot of spots to fill. Hard work goes into all of that. All right. Without any other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? All right, resolution passes. All right, our next action item, uh, the Sumner Bonnie Lake School District is allowed to set aside up to 5% for readiness to learn or RTL. The program of RTL is to deliver academic and non-academic support to participating students who are significantly at risk of not being successful in school. The RTL program reduces barriers to learning, increases student engagement and enhances student achievement. The administration recommends that the board of directors approve five, 5% to be set aside for readiness to learn or RTL as part of the Learning Assistance Program. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I'm, what a great program. So excited about that. All right. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, getting to more exciting stuff. We've got some contracts to approve. So the administration recommends the board approve the twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-eight three-year SBL-E-A Collective Bargaining Agreement and Salary Schedule. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? All right, motion passes. Awesome. It's exciting. All right, next exciting action item is our IUOE Collective Bargaining Agreement. The district administration recommends the board adopt the IUOE Custodial Collective Bargaining Agreement for September 1st, 2025 through August 31st, 2027. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I'll say just excited to vote on a contract for a definitely a hardworking group in our, in our district. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, next one on our list is our City of Bonnie Lake and Sumner Bonnie Lake School District Interlocal Agreement. The administration recommends extending the current interlocal agreement between the City of Bonnie Lake and the Sumner Bonnie Lake School District for one year to support the Parks and Recs Program effective September 1st, 2025 and expiring August 31st, 2026. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Any seconds?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, that ends that uh, part of our agenda. Uh, we have some information. So Budget Status Report, the Chief Finance and District Operations Officer Brian Verley will provide a Budget Status Report for April to the board for information in your packets. All right, that brings us to some policy matters that we can take some action on tonight. Um, in accordance with Policy Thirteen Ten, Adoption Amendment of Policies and Bylaws, the following policy is included for adoption and will take effect in September. The district administration recommends the board adopt the following district policy in accordance with Policy Thirteen Ten, Adoption Amendment of Policies and Bylaws. Do I have a motion? Thank you. Any second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, for those watching at home, this is, we're voting on moving board meetings from Wednesday nights to Tuesday nights. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, information only in your packet in accordance with Policy Thirteen Ten, Adoption Amendment of Policy Bylaws, the following policies are provided for first reading. Uh, thirty-two oh five, thirty-two oh six, thirty-two twenty-four, fifty-ten, fifty-eleven and fifty-thirteen. You'll find that information in your packet. All right, also for information only, uh, Transportation Department report Director of Transportation Pam Knapp has submitted an update for the Transportation Department to the board that you'll find in your packet for reading. As well as we have a Highly Capable Program Report, Executive Director of Secondary Steve Schollen and TOSA for Highly Capable Programs, Anna Carlson had provided a report containing information about the highly capable programs in the Sumner Bonnie Lake School District. Look forward to uh, reading all that. Good stuff. Thank you for providing those, which brings us to board discussion. Any board discussion tonight?
Um, I guess the one thing I really wanted to um, bring up tonight was uh, just before coming, I was looking at email. And we got a, a really, we had a parent that was um, planning on coming tonight for public comment and uh, she couldn't make it. But she sent us all a really nice email um, that was just expressed how important and how uh, how helpful Mrs. Herrera, one of the great counselors at Sumner High School was for her, not just her, her recent student, but her uh, two prior, prior students as well, as they worked through um, the school. And, and it was a very thoughtful and very complete. And um, I think it's just one of those things to remember how lucky we are to have, have the support. And um, and it was a true testament to again, kind of living the Sumner High School or the, the Sumner School District, uh, Sumner Bonnie Lake School District uh, promise. So um, I just wanted to mention that since she wasn't here to do it.
Yeah, that was a really nice email and compliments to Miss Herrera for all the hard work she puts in. Tom?
One thing I forgot to talk about is that at the end of the school year, we had the one group up in, in uh, over here, I guess it was. Anyway, the students are eighteen years old to twenty-two, community base. That was quite a program. Those, they've got challenges. They did it so well. And they, they worked with them so well for them to move on. I'm looking forward to going into their programs next year and seeing them at work and how they're growing. It's really remarkable program. I just don't think anybody really knows what we've done with that, but I was really impressed with that. I'm sorry, I forgot, I forgot to bridge early.
No, I'm glad you brought that up. That was, I mean, the community-based transition program is so vital for those students that uh, they can be, have that extra time to develop skills and develop uh, you know, workplace experience and, and head out into the world to be uh,
Open themselves up too, you know, be able to talk to people and stuff.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. They uh, they have a lot of challenges and the, the staff does a great job to put them on a path to success. So it's great.
So if you were there, you saw Hank. Hank, right? Hank is a chatterbox. Uh, and he's adorable and delightful and works hard. Um, and two of Dave's crew, Donnie and Dave, actually they help him. They're like the big elephants helping the little elephant. He graduated. Now Dave, didn't he get a job? Is he working for Vodis? Yeah, so he's already, he has a job. Hank has a job. I mean, way to go Hank, but way to go Donnie and Dave. Because you talk about community, two of Dave's ground, grounds crew are helping Hank, I mean, live a better fulfilled life by getting a job. So nice job.
Nice. Yeah.
Big elephants.
Anybody else have anything tonight?
Um, so I had the opportunity to go up to the end of the year, uh, transportation and mechanic side uh, luncheon. And I just want to give a shout out to Pam and all that crew, the bus drivers. I had the pleasure when I became Assistant Superintendent, wanting to learn more about it as I rode the bus on a number of occasions with the kids and bus driver. And it was fun. Um, but uh, really what stuck out to me, I don't know about you, Dr. Dent, is uh, Pam has developed such a strong team atmosphere up there and there's so much pride in what they're doing. And uh, it was just so wonderful to see. And then also we have a bus driver going to state and hopefully taking Lori to Nationals. Yes, but uh, it, it's just an incredible group that does amazing work uh, up there. And, and I don't think they get a lot of recognition. So it was really fun to go up and see that.
Yeah, that facility is definitely impressive to walk through and see what they do for those buses on a daily basis. And, and the fact that they are always passing their inspections with a hundred percent every time has just got to feel so good for them and, and, and validate the hard work that they put in. Yeah, they, they run a tight ship up there. Yeah, it's pretty cool. Any other board discussion before we, all right? That brings us to our announcement of our next regular board meeting. The board meeting has been scheduled for Wednesday, July 16th, 2025. And will begin at 6:00 PM in the central office boardroom right here. We are adjourned.